That if you get a slug of high iron water coming through your home. Plumbing, it can stain fixtures as well as clothing. So, and if I remember correctly, Todd, when that well was dug and they ran ran it out and it. I think they did a flush out onto the street, the concrete was stained for quite a long period of time.
You are correct.
Yeah, so. Iron isn't our friend for a municipal water supply.
One more thing to add to that, and that's the fire department's equipment, you know, so when you're. Hauling a fire truck around with nine hundred gallons of water in it that, you know, was filled by a hydrant. It's it as well will hold that. Iron and all of those contaminants in that water, so it's very hard on, you know, the firefighting apparatuses. All of that equipment and it wears those valves and seals out on there as well too, so. That that is a multi-fold over and over and over issue for our city and its citizens.
And Randy and your chief crable may be able to weigh in, but the condition and capacity of your water system is a huge part of the city's ISO rating. Our insurance services organization rating, which sets your rates for the fire portion of your insurance.
Yeah, that's right. Marion has what's called an ISO rating of a number three right now. The highest is a number nine, and that's set by the insurance services offices, which are divisions out of. For the insurance side is out of Chicago. And you got to be able to pump X amount of gallons for a specific period of time without any delay or drop in water pressure, so. By having those, to be able to pump so many gallons of water in a twenty minute period without any pressure drop on that. Just goes to show, and it lowers those insurance rates, so that's huge, not only on residential, but in commercial property, so. You know, it could be, it could impact your premium by fifteen to twenty percent just based on that ISO rating, so. You know, kudos to our city and where we are, and it's very, very difficult to. Get a little bit higher from where we are. I mean, you basically would have to have a fire hydrant in everybody's yard to get to that level, but. That is huge, you know, when I, when I got into the business twenty five years ago, I believe we were a four, maybe? Four or five, so we've come a long ways with that, so. Again, it's just a matrix component to that, but it's huge for all commercial and residential property owners, and it's. People don't even know what that really is, but it's a, it's a matrix to your insurance.
I would just throw out a kudos to Zach and Lon, these presentations have really. Increased the value and professionalism over the years. I've been here a while and we're moving right along. Good job.
Thank you for coming. Thanks, Todd. So with the city, we have our own enterprise funds, the city communications funds, we call it a proprietary fund, but it doesn't really function completely as a proprietary fund. The major expenses that would come out of here, we will, we use money out of this account. If we have to extend part of our fiber ring to a new city facility or something like that. And I believe the revenues are coming from the leases with Verizon Towers, et cetera, where we might have miscellaneous. Income coming in associated from those types of expenses. It's not full communications utility, because that would be. And that would be the sense of your internet providers, things like that, so we we account for expenses here, but I'm just a little cautious to make sure that I don't couch it as being. This is a proprietary fund, because that takes a vote of the public to form one of these. So there's what it looks like from year to year. We're anticipating ending the year with a cash balance of around five hundred and four thousand. If we have things associated with outside of fiber extensions, occasionally somebody runs into the fiber or something like that. If we don't know who it is, we have to have a repair done, something like that, it comes out of here as well. Road use fund, so the road use fund is the largest of the non-general fund divisions. We've got twenty nine personnel in there now. Ryan has proposed adding one more equipment operator position to this one. As I said, we've allocated a hundred and eighty three thousand in engineering expenses to this fund. We are transferring in a little more than that, around two hundred and thirty two thousand from. Property tax revenue into road use to help offset those expenses and help make sure that we're not drawing against this one too aggressively, given that. We had at least one fiscal year where collections were reduced and we don't know a hundred percent. How long that will continue before we completely recover from pre-COVID levels for transportation. With this one, we do have a fund balance that's fairly substantial. This would be another one that we would be leaning on for the deratio recovery. We're anticipating pulling in one point five million from fund balance from road use to assist with that. Think in terms of all of the trees and everything that were damaged in the right of way, all of that is eligible under road use to. Be paid for out of this fund. So overall, here's what the fund looks like, coming in through the course of the year, you can see that it is unstructurally balanced. By about three million, one point five of that would be what we'd anticipate covering the deratio payment. But then this one is also shouldering part of the cost of the facility that we expect to get back online. Hang on, my computer just stopped responding, so this might take a second. There we go. I got booted. Does that mean we lost the public? Yeah, it's internet, because team's down too. I'm on fifty eight. I think I'm back. Yeah. There we are. Sorry about that. I had a hiccup in my internet connection. So road use replacement, this is a fund that we do an annual transfer to out of road use, it's what we use to fund the. Replacement and acquisition primarily of the fleet for that division. We are anticipating that with the facility starting to come online, one of the things that we have seen. Public services has been delaying the replacement of the fleet, so that we could have that facility up and running to help facilitate the transition over to. Compressed natural gas. This winter, we're starting to really see the impact of that as far as the equipment really is starting to age out, and it's taking a lot more work from his mechanics to be able to keep the equipment on the road. Ryan, did you want to talk fleet replacement at all? We have talked about it quite a bit, so.
Lon, just a question on that that I have, is it any one category of equipment that is in the worst shape? Or is it pretty much across the entire fleet of equipment that we have out?
You're gonna get up here after all, Ryan.
So. We delayed the replacement of equipment, some of the equipment is twenty years old. When you combine the sodium chloride or the rock salt. On to that type of equipment, the snow removal equipment, it's it's starting to age to the point where. This year, what I call mainline trucks, those are your tandem axle trucks, the big trucks. That we rely on, we have about ten of those, four of those went down during that significant snow event, and so when that happens, that's that's. That's serious concern, and so essentially the mechanics, we called every single mechanic we had in. They worked throughout the entire night just to get it operational again. That next week, they had to rebuild the entire box system and the conveyors. That was very expensive, and so. We're to the point that if we keep pushing the replacement out anymore, we're gonna, I'm afraid we're gonna be in a little bit of trouble here, so. We budgeted the money sitting there, the cash is sitting there, so our goal is to get the. Get up a good portion of fleet replaced in fiscal year twenty two.
So Ryan, I guess part of my question was, does it somewhat affect all equipment that's out on the road that you have? You know, garbage trucks, dump trucks, the whole fleet, or is there any one category that is more impacted?
Not impacted is what I call the off-road equipment, that your back goes, that your loaders, your motor graders. Every other piece of rolling stock that we have, the replacement of that rolling stock has been. Delayed in order to make the transition to compressed natural gas.
Okay.
In the meantime, Ryan, has the cost gone up to replace? I mean, you've budgeted a certain amount.
We haven't seen, we eye that probably each quarter. We look at what fleet replacements are at, what they cost, we haven't seen a substantial increase, so.
Okay, so the replacement, is it gonna be to compress natural gas?
Right now, that's the plan.
Okay, so we're not changing that?
Yeah, that's the plan, we revisit it from time to time, but that's the plan right now.
Renee, did you have a answer to that? Okay.
And I, go ahead. I think too, just one thing to just reiterate again too, I think, you know, Ryan, you've done an awesome job keeping this equipment up and delaying the fact and not replacing equipment. To put us in a position to make that conversion, so I know you're probably holding on a substantial amount of money that should have gone to capital replacement, but. We're using it to offset those potential fleet exchanges, is that right?
Yeah, and so every year, like Lon said, about, we transfer about three hundred and twenty to three hundred and fifty thousand into road use replacement. We have not spent a dime of that, I believe, in almost ten years, and so everything has stayed there with the plan to transition to compressed natural gas.
Right, perfect, thank you, I just wanted to obviously recall that again, just to remind everybody that you've been patching this up with the intent of this potential coming up, so thanks.
That, so does that include garbage trucks?
Yeah, that's the same thing, the last refuse truck that we replaced, I believe is. Two thousand eleven, two thousand twelve, I had to check to make sure, typically, we do replace refuse truck every year. When I started, there was a seven-year lifecycle, then we pushed those to ten, our goal is to push them to fifteen when we're done. And so those have aged quite a bit, we do have some refuse trucks there that are way past their lifecycle, so.
But that's one of the areas that Ryan identified as an area of opportunity is that. Because we were replacing one every year, there were changes to the chassis, there were changes to the power trains every single year, so you have to retrain your mechanic on every vehicle that comes out. And by doing this and by going common platform across the chassis, same. Oil filters, same oil, same replacement parts, it'll make it a lot easier for us to be able to maintain them and keep everybody trained up, they'll really be able to specialize.
Have we made the decision when we get the new equipment, whether we're gonna go to yardies?
That's part of, that'll be part of the solid waste study.
Still part of that study, okay.
Yeah, that'll be part of that study, so the the truck, well, I'll get into it in the study, but the the cost of the chassis is really no different. To put an automated arm on is not a very large expense, fifteen to twenty gram. The expensive part is actually the carts. So if you were to copy what Cedar Rapids does, that's about one point five million dollars in carts.
Are there any questions related to that that would be good to put into the citizen survey we're gonna be doing this year to get input?
Yes. Yep, and so that's, that's, that, there's a lot of questions to put in there.
Okay.
But part of that study is to do a supplemental survey. That we still want to do it in the, you know, annual set of the biannual survey, but.
Right.
There's programs that we can do that are very unique that we want to get feedback on.
We should definitely put that in the survey. My, you know, I don't have any data to back this up, but my feeling and from all the comments I get. It's usually from people who have moved here from Cedar Rapids, with all the people moving from Cedar Rapids, we're getting that question a lot more is. Why don't you have the automated trash pickup? And because that's what they're used to, so it'd be a good question to add to the survey, yeah.
I think the second most common question that we get is automated leaf pickup, rather than having to have everybody bag leaves.
They're used, they're used to that in Cedar Rapids, so.
Any other questions for Ryan? So the next one we wanted to talk about was sanitary sewer, and I do want to do a little bit of a deeper dive into this one, because. There's some more dynamics in play here on the increase to wastewater treatment fees beyond just the cost of the wastewater treatment fee itself. So as it sits right now, we are proposing what would be a fairly substantial increase to sanitary sewer. The good news is, is that we may not have to do all of that. So every year Cedar Rapids gives us a new rate for what the cost of treatment is, but the other components on our wastewater treatment agreement with them include buying capacity from them. I talked about that a little bit earlier when I said that we were buying capacity for forty eight thousand. Well, our contract with them actually has two different numbers in it. One is that when we first executed the new agreement for our current capacity that we were using. We had to buy capacity for up to forty five thousand population, so there's one fee that we've been paying. Every month that we had put in there for four years to pay for that capacity. There's a second one, and that's the one that takes us from the forty five to forty eight thousand population. This coming year, those two overlap in the same year. The second fee was intended to be collected for five years, so it's broken out over sixty months. I reached out to the new utilities director in Cedar Rapids to see if Cedar Rapids would entertain pushing that back, either pushing the whole series back one fiscal year or. Simply taking what should be paid over sixty months and moving it to forty eight months instead. Either one of those means that we get rid of the overlap, and just to give you an idea, that's one point oh seven million of the one point seven million that's contained in this. So it's a very, very significant number for us as far as what we'll be able to do for making a rate adjustment if they're willing to grant that forbearance for us. So if they'll allow us to either slide it back or reamortize it from sixty months to forty eight, this will actually look substantially different for the city council. It was framed up this way, just in case they don't grant that request, but you as the council always have the option to actually proceed with the rate increase that's needed. So even if it's modeled in the budget, to be able to accommodate these numbers, if it doesn't turn out to be that large, then the rate increase would look quite a bit different.
When will you know?
Roy has not given me an idea, he just said that they'd get, I did underscore that this was pretty urgent, because we were in the middle of budget, and he said that they'd. Let me know very quickly, but didn't give me a specific date, I'll follow up with him probably Wednesday of next week, if I haven't heard anything back from him on that. And I did outline to him that, you know, post deratio, we were looking at significant impacts on folks during a time when it's really tough for a lot of people, and he did indicate that they have done. Similar things, I think, with some of their large industrial users, so hopefully they will treat us the same way. So looking at the sanitary sewer fund with the, with it modeled the way that we have it right now, you can see that when we get down to the end. We are drawing against the balance quite a bit, I believe the rate increase included half of the amount that we were anticipating that we would need. To be able to cover that difference for CR, so again, if that comes out, this rate looks quite a bit different than the bottom line at the end of the fiscal year looks a lot better. Sanitary sewer replacement, we talked about this one earlier. Here, we're looking forward into the CIP at what we are gonna need to do for continued investments into the existing sanitary sewer system as well as enhancements. On some of the future phases of the Indian Creek Trunk Sewer Project, and just thought that this was the time to propose to the city council that we really take a look at that one dollar. A month addition to that fee. So one of the things that was identified in the sanitary sewer study that the council will see is. That we can really preserve the the utility and the level of service across a lot of our existing system. In the older sections of town with a concerted effort towards reducing inflow and infiltration into the system, so. Looking at, again, looking forward at upping the amount that we allocate towards that program would have significant benefits to the community as well. So here we get into solid waste, the solid waste, the public services board has recommended an increase in the collections rate by a dollar twenty five. Proceeding ahead with the fleet replacement and then doing the waste management study that we've talked about. As Ryan talked about, that study really is to take a look at the entire way that we do waste management and and waste collections from the ground up to. Create the roadmap for us to make sure that we're doing it as efficiently as we can, but also are serving the needs and desires of the community on moving forward on that. So that budget has a full-time staff of eight. Brian, do you have a gut instinct on where we are as far as when we would need to add another route, or is that contingent on the result of the study?
Yeah, the study is gonna have a major impact on that, whether or not we go automated, if we do decide to go automated as a community. Your need to add staff pretty much will go away for the next five years. Okay, that's how efficient automation is. Now, if we stay with manual collections, typically each route is about five hundred houses per day. And so Marion typically grows three fifty to five hundred houses per year. And so within four to five years, we'll need to add an additional route. Yeah, that's another truck, that's another person, and so essentially, I, you know, you take the cost of the truck and the person and the maintenance costs. That that's the trigger points for the, for the new routes, so. The variable in that is yard waste, we have one yard waste truck. We're getting big enough to have two, we just don't know when that is, it's gonna be soon. Again, that study is gonna help us kind of give us a path and how that's gonna look, so.
So at the end of what we've got projected in here, again, the the solid waste operating budget, we'd be looking at bringing the new facility online. And at the end of the fiscal year, we'd anticipate that it would have about five point six months worth of operating costs held in reserve. Solid waste replacement fund here reflects the fleet replacement that would be anticipated to bring those new trucks online. Although that number, I think, could potentially vary some again, depending on whether or not we go with the automated collections or not. Moving ahead into stormwater management, this one, again, this is an area where we're anticipating using some of the existing fund balance to help cover the costs of deratio. We'd be expecting to bring about five hundred thousand out of here towards that cost, and then we do have the environmental specialist position in here. So overall, the stormwater management fund, when Zach was going through the revenues, he showed you what the balance or the. Cash balance worksheet looked like, we'd be drawing about six hundred and twelve thousand against the balance with five hundred thousand of that going towards waterway cleanup expenses.
Lon, can you, can I ask you again what the environmental specialist's job duties are?
So the environmental specialist, right now, we have our stormwater management coordinator who has to wear a lot of different hats. With our NPDES permit for stormwater, there's requirements that we have to do things like public education and outreach. We also have to issue permits and do inspections on active construction sites, make sure that we're keeping up on all of our annual reporting. Investigating violations, what we're running into is it just outstrips the ability of one person to be able to monitor that, and so. We do get audited and they do come out and do inspections related to those types of activities. So a couple of years ago, they came out and investigated a couple of sites, and I think one developer ended up getting fined about eight thousand dollars for activities that they were undertaking. We get pictures sent in, and I know I do, and I'm sure engineering does as well. Again, some of the contractors are more diligent than others about making sure that when they're cleaning out their concrete trucks at a construction site, they're doing it in the cleanouts and not down into the storm sewer. With the number, sheer number of active construction sites that we have going and the scale of the construction that we're seeing, it's just simply impossible to have one person be able to do all that, so. This position would be targeted more towards that active inspection and enforcement out in the field to ensure that we're keeping up on what's going on at the construction sites. If Mike Barklow is on, he might be able to weigh in with some other.
Taking everything that Steve's doing and splitting it into two positions now?
Yes.
Steve will be doing a review, for example, participating in the technical review for plans, and that position would be like pollution prevention. Inspections, so they'll be going around to a construction site, make sure they have the sediment control, they have the washouts, and for the big. Erosion control permits, they'll make sure they have a swoop plan, and they're following that plan.
Mike?
So just to give a little more context, so we have to have our own MS four permit, because we are a big enough population. So with that, the DNR actually gives some of their power to us and expects us to take care of some of that stuff. For example, Steve Cooper has to go around every quarter and inspect every active construction site to make sure that they have all their permits. And that they're doing everything properly out in the field. And as Lon was alluding to, we have a lot of projects out there, so not just city projects, but subdivision, site plans, everything that's going on out there. And it's just a lot of work, at one time, it was Darren and Grayson doing it part-time. And, you know, we were squeaking by, and the requirements just keep getting more and more. And now it's kind of just with one person, it's kind of hard to squeak by, I think Cedar Rapids has three or four full-time people just to keep up with their MS four permit.
Okay, thanks for that detail.
If we go by to do the inspection and they don't have their permits, do they get fined?
Yep, and what we have to do is we have to do it through municipal infraction, but we have had to do that. They also have to transfer over permits from, say, the developer to, say, he sells a lot to a. A single individual that's then is building a house, we have to make sure all those transfers happen. And so there's paperwork with those building permits that Steve has to review for every single building project out there.
But are there penalties levied against these developers if they're not doing these things that we're inspecting for?
Yeah.
Okay, thank you.
And we've actually find a concrete company for illegal dumping for not following procedures out on job sites. But I think that's one of those things that, when you hear me use the term unfunded mandate, as far as local impact, this one is one of those poster children to me for unfunded mandates. That it's got to be done, but there's no money associated with the requirement for doing it.
Yeah, and that's why I wanted to make sure there was at least a penalty to hopefully incent people to do it right the first time, so that's good.
And that brings us down to the urban forest utility, this utility supports a full-time staff of three, and with urban forests. We've talked about this one quite a bit already, but that was one of the inadvertent benefits of the deratio is allowing us to move away from being. Reactive and taking care of an existing problem to starting to think about what does the future of the tree canopy of Marion look like, so. No real changes proposed here other than what it takes to support the existing staff. As Seth said, some of the money that was programmed in there for contract services will be, is proposed to be reallocated to go towards reforestation programs. But that's within the existing budget, we were not looking for additional resources for that. So overall, we are looking at just a slight draw, about eighty six hundred towards the cash balance, this one is pretty close to. So overall, we are looking at just a slight draw, about 8,600 towards the cash balance. This one is pretty close to, to being structurally balanced. This one is actually fairly new. Again, when we set up the Urban Forest Utility, we didn't really have a replacement initially because it didn't exclusively own its own equipment. But now that it's buying things like chainsaws in particular, with the expense of the bucket truck, wood chipper, things like that, this is our sinking fund to set money aside each year so that when those come up for replacement, we have cash reserves to draw on. So overall, this is what the proprietary fund initiatives look like. We're expecting to get the Public Services Facility back on track so that we can move in there, start down the path of getting our tree canopy back up and running and get the waste management study underway so that we can move into that next stage of what solid waste management looks like. So, outside of those, when we look broader at all levels of budget, what's sitting out there for budget threats? Well, we've talked quite a bit already about potential for the state yanking the rug out from underneath us on the backfill. That would create an immediate hole in the city budget of about $475,000. And then just bumping up into the limits of what we're able to do on the property tax side. You know, Marion, for a long time, had, has, had the luxury of having some room underneath the various levy caps. Because we weren't for one reason or another, for example, when we were starting to do our planning for the third fire station, we were able to hold some of the levies down, in particular employee benefits. So that was, we needed to start to add staff, we had the levy capacity to be able to do that. With the changes to the overall property tax system, a lot of that flexibility has been taken away. So we are starting to really run into the gap, the maximum of what we're actually able to levy for property taxes. With the deratio, the big question is how long is it going to take for us to get reimbursed? What steps have to be done? We kind of know from prior events how long it takes with a typical event. But with a typical event, we weren't putting in funding requests for eight or nine million dollars. And we're expecting additional levels of scrutiny with those versus getting a check for three or 400,000 for trail repairs or things like that associated with a flood event. So, the first time will really let us see what that turnaround time actually is. Overall, the budget does have some plans in that for paying the interest charges on our interim line of credit. We're levying on the debt service levy for approximately 200,000 of that. And then 200,000 of that would be coming out of cash that we currently have on hand in the debt service fund. So, the debt service fund, I think we've talked about this through with council before, sometimes does accumulate extra dollars. Most notably, when we do refunding of something, if we have an existing note out there and we levy for what the payment is and then refund it during the course of a fiscal year, sometimes that payment will get deferred to the next fiscal year, but the income has already come in, so it stays in the debt service fund. So we're looking at using some of those dollars to help cover that interest cost through the next fiscal year. All in, if we were to exercise all of it, we would expect that that could be as much as a $600,000 overall expense during the fiscal year. We don't think that we're going to exercise the full amount of the line of credit or that we would have to carry it for the whole fiscal year. So we're being a little bit more conservative than that as far as what we would be backfilling with the debt service levy. So on the deratio program, here's what that looks like overall. We've got programmed into the budget that we would repay out of cash about 46% of the expected worst-case scenario city share. I'm excited to see what the new numbers look like after Ryan has a chance to model out what the new costs are based on the bids that we received last night because I think they were pretty favorable compared to what we originally thought those numbers were going to be. So hopefully that brings the number down. The other piece is what can we gather for backup data to demonstrate what the community has already done? We know about where we should be for how much the community did that FEMA didn't have to pay for, just because we've got estimates for the, the cubic yards of what was wrought out by our residents and citizens to the separate site at the Public Services Facility off 44th Street before we really switched over to doing everything with our contractors. So, the more documentation that we can get for that, the more that that helps us cover that local share as in-kind services, all of which benefits the community for less that we then have to pay out of pocket towards deratio recovery. So.
So, if a homeowner had transported all their debris to the landfill and not waited for the city to pick it up, that's, that's something that should be reported or?
Anything that was not required to be handled by us or one of our contractors through FEMA where it's eligible. So anything that they did that reduced FEMA's costs could be counted towards that. But documentation is critical. At our site, it's a little easier just because we have, we, we know what the cubic yardage looked like. People taking it out to the Solid Waste Agency wouldn't have come through ours, so we wouldn't know for sure.
So you'd need some kind of documentation for that, which is probably not that easy.
We learned from FEMA that their process requires a signature for volunteer hours, even though we have the proof that we have the residential pile and we kept it separate and we know the volume and we, we have pictures before and after. However, they, they said they needed documentation as of signing in and out of the site. That's why we, we're calling citizens out to sign up and fill that form on our website, just to have it as documentation proof that people did volunteer and haul out that debris.
Yeah. Okay.
So, looking at this slide, you can see what the, where the numbers come in. 1.5 from, from road use, 1 million from general fund, and then 500,000 from stormwater management. So again, as that number overall comes down for total anticipated costs, the numbers start to look rosier for when or if we have to actually transition over to permanent financing for the cost of the project. I think it won't belabor the point, but I think the council knows that the, my greatest worry on this is that, you know, what happens if there's a second disaster? That's why we're really trying to make sure that if we do have to do longer-term financing on it, that that number is as small as possible, just in case something else would happen. So as far as the next steps, Zach covered earlier what we have to do with the maximum property tax hearing. I've made my feelings on this process fairly well-known in the past. I think it's got some flaws in it in that it doesn't actually require you to disclose to the public what all of your levies actually do. And since the debt service levy in particular, the city council can just levy whatever you need in order to be able to service the debt in that particular year varies quite a bit. And not having that as part of this picture and in effect, not even being able to put it on the form makes it challenging to explain to the public why when you put your maximum property tax levy certification out and then actually approve the budget, there's a difference between the two numbers. I know that the process was intended to create clarity, but in my mind, as I look at what, how it was actually carried out, it creates more confusion than it creates clarity. So, to move it forward, we need a two-thirds vote of the city council to exceed the 2%. And that has to be sent out by January 28th to make sure that we can comply with the timelines for publication for the public hearing. And then once it's published, it establishes the ceiling for what we can do for our property tax levy. Obviously, we do not expect to hit that. We just want to make sure that as we put this out, we're being reasonable on doing a little bit of contingency planning, but not, not sky is falling contingency planning. So here's what the hearing timeline looks like. The resolution setting the date for the hearing was approved by the city council last night. We have to get it over to the Times for publication by the 28th. It would go in on the 4th and then the hearing could actually be held on the 18th. Budget-related hearings are not subject to your normal four days to 20 days. They are a 10 to 20. So you have to give the public more advance notice than you do for a typical public hearing, say for rezoning or anything like that. And here's, let's see, is, is this the one that you're proposing, Zach, or the next one? Okay.
One, one that Lon has up right now, this would be what's being proposed with the budget. The proposed budget next year, so the 5.53. This is what, given the property tax levies up under the max property tax notice, where would lie with the 5.53 increase? And then the next slide is the recommended slide of the increase of that $550,000 capacity, which would take it to a an 8.18% increase for those levies, giving us the capacity that Lon noted. So, the, the question for city council, because this is one of the things I wanted to make sure we discuss today because that needs to be sent out to Marion Times in order to continue with the timeline, is, does city council feel comfortable with this level? And if not, what level should we look at so that we can make sure we publish at that appropriate rate? And the recommendation of staff would be to publish at the, it's 14.6, which is the rate up there, once again, the, the additional capacity in there.
And the struggle, I think, that Marion has and that growing communities have with that 2% cap is just simply that they're calculating the 2% on how much cash you collect year over year. So if your tax base were to stay the same and you're looking to exceed 2%, you're looking at a property tax rate increase in order to be able to do that. Marion is a growing community where we are adding tax base and substantial amounts of tax base year over year is almost set to exceed that 2% just based on natural growth from year to year with no change to our levy at all. So it's going to hit that trigger regardless, most years, most decent growth years. Regardless of if the city council makes the rate float or contemplates a rate increase at all. So, for what's contemplated in the budget, the budget itself shows the property tax rate coming in at 1429. What we're suggesting is that the published rate be pushed out there at 1460. That gives us some room, if a bill gets floated and it happens before we hold the second hearing to actually approve the budget and backfill where to get yanked away from us, it gives us some flexibility to be able to recover from that.
And if I can put, put out one note of clarification, because I think this maybe somewhat convoluted the way presented, is the suggested publishing rate right there, that's actually not the publishing rate. It's actually the small one, correct? That's a total. I just took into account all of our property tax levies put in context. But actually, what we'd be publishing is a 12-point. Yeah, thank you, Lon. 12.52 827. So that would be the rate that would be published. Given a 50,000, once again, $550,000 increase above what's being proposed in the FY22 budget right now.
Mayor?
Yes, go ahead.
Oh, are you still going to go? Are you looking for feedback on that last slide?
Feedback.
Okay, so just a couple of things. I think it's great to not give away any advantage we have in terms of publishing. So I don't have an issue with publishing at the, the cap because we can always come down from it. We've done it before. I think it just, you know, why hamstring ourselves to something like that? I guess my larger question, though, is it's after four on Friday, we're not meeting tomorrow. When do we dive into the budget that's proposed to talk about what we agree or don't agree with, where we can massage numbers? You know, I've written down at least eight studies since we've been here and have requested, and I spoke with them all, but you know, I want to see a one-pager on the proposed new positions and what that adds up to, a one-pager on the proposed studies and what that adds up to, a one-pager on the proposed systems and what that adds up to. And I think, for me, you know, we've been looking at it in different buckets, but I want to look at it more holistically. And so when, when do we have that conversation? That's not at a regular council meeting, correct?
No, we can do that at a regular council meeting if we wanted to just do a budget follow-up. The big key is after the maximum public, after the maximum tax levy hearing is set and we make that decision, then the next decision comes down to what do you actually publish for the pieces that set the budget? And in the past, we've held these budget work sessions and sometimes reserved another day in February to reconvene. We've also done it at a regular Tuesday work session to get further direction from the city council on what you want us to have in the actual final budget. So we have some flexibility with that.
Okay, yeah, and I apologize. I don't remember what we've done in the past, but you know, so we've been here for eight hours and we've needed to, to get all of this. This is a ton of data. This is what's going to help us drive the decisions. But I feel like we need time to respond and give feedback. You're not just presenting for a rubber stamp. I'm assuming you want feedback. I, I know how I feel. I don't know how anyone else does, but I would like to. So I feel like if that can happen at a work session, that's great. I don't know, I don't want to shortcut ourselves and not give enough time to the city budget. This is one of the most important things we do. So, that's just where I'm coming from. So, for your feedback, what you need to publish, I'm fine with the ceiling. I don't know where anyone else is. But I really want to have a conversation about some of the things we looked at in the budget because I'm not okay with at least not having a discussion about some of these numbers.
But we usually have a time when we have decision points or we have to make decisions. Is that still?
We've got the decision points outlined in the presentation. The, this was the first one, that maximum property tax levy, because that's the one that has the most imminent timeline for us to get that published.
But I agree with what Renee's saying. I think that that's, that's important. I'm sure that's what you want too.
Can I, can I just follow up on a couple of things? I too, it makes sense to publish what you had shown us. And, and we did that last year, right? I mean, we're following what we did last year. Regarding the conversation and discussion, so we're not meeting tomorrow? Or we are meeting tomorrow? I think we had reserved tomorrow as kind of a, we could if we needed to, right? So that conversation, we could have that conversation tomorrow regarding some of this information as well. Is that, am I right in recollecting that?
You're exact, you're exactly correct. I may have been overly optimistic to think we get through everything today, but I think that's the question. We could, we could reconvene tomorrow and go through these pieces more, more in-depth, or we could reconvene at one of the next council work sessions in order to go over this more fully. Whatever the direction is of council either way.
Sure. So, I'm sure we'll need to have some discussion about that. I would be happy to meet tomorrow. It's sort of fresh and we're having some good, I think we needed today and to be able to dig through all this, but I would advocate, I know nobody likes to work on Saturdays, but Saturday is better than Tuesday night at 8 o'clock and I'm tired too. So, that's where I am. So, thank you.
Yes, go ahead, Steve.
Yeah, I mean, just from a very high level, first of all, I think I'll compliment the staff from the standpoint that I believe the budget, the CIP aligns the best it ever has with our strategic plan. Right? So we can definitely see, at least I, I think we could definitely see the effort put forth in some of the outlines, some of the new positions, some of the initiatives in trying to match up with that strategic plan. So to me, that's the best alignment that we have had yet. So from a high-level standpoint, if I look at the, the rate of 1429, if you take out the new emergency levy, it's flat compared to last year. And considering some of the new initiatives we want to do, considering the growth we had, considering a lot of the issues, I think the majority of people in our city are not expecting a flat year. They're expecting something to be increased just simply because of the deratio, the impact, the cost that the city has. They don't know exactly how we're going to fund it. We're doing the majority of that out of fund balance, but they have no idea up to this point whether that's going to be an extent, an expense, an increase in the, in the levy or not. So, I'm okay at this point, again, from a high level with the 1429. I'm okay with adding the emergency levy. Again, my personal position on the emergency levy is I would only support that to the extent that that definition on how that money can be used gets a little more specific as to what it can be used now and for the future.
And if the council's not comfortable with, with doing that, one of the things that we could do is we could, in essence, use the Equipment Replacement Fund, which normally would be a source that we would use for replacing software programs. If we treat that as an internal loan, we could shift that 150,000 to the debt service levy line item and in essence reimburse ourselves for advancing those costs out of the Equipment Replacement Fund to do that. So we can do it without putting it against the emergency levy. I put it there because I wanted to make sure that we specifically called that out to the city council, but that's not the only option that we would have.
Right. And as far as meeting Saturday, if we have to, I'm fine with that. I had it technically reserved. Tilly was willing to make more food for us. So, I already told her, nah, forget it. You got a volleyball tournament tomorrow.
Can we request cinnamon rolls? Can we request cinnamon rolls?
That's my daughter that makes the cinnamon rolls.
So looking forward, the other decision points that we've got are the general fund reserve. Well, the way that we have things set up right now, as I said, it's coming in unstructurally balanced with 1 million going to Dratcho and then picking up 150,000 of the public safety management system. And then it does then include the 200,000 of salary savings just because of those limitations in New World of having to reconcile that at the end. We have to apportion it out later. But in this format, it would show that you were drawing 200,000 against the general fund balance. Just you apportion the savings out towards the end of the budget year. So here's where you get into, I think, the question that you were talking about earlier is what's the estimated annual impact to the residents? What does it look like when you're talking about it all in? And I apologize, this one's, this is a tough one to consolidate down to the point that it's really going to be easy to read. There's two versions of it in here and Zach wanted me to show you this one and not the first one, because I thought this one looked better. But you want to run through this one, Zach?
And first off, I have to say thank you to Janice, because one of the things prior to the budget workshop today, I said, Janice, help me contextualize these increases. So she was able to put together, given some information on utility billing from November 2020, what the average residential bill will be. Because mind you, there's complexity depending upon consumption and the type of billing structure. So this is only for residential, so that we can, once again, have a context to these increases being proposed in some of the funds here. So for residential accounts, we'll start at the top. This will be the 2021, so what's currently in place for this year. The average or solid waste is easy. It's a straight 1750 each month for solid waste services. Going to the next one, sanitary sewer replacement. Once again, this is a $2 fixed fee each month. Sanitary sewer, this is the mix of a flat and a variable rate. $2 flat plus the 410 per each 100 cubic feet of water in there. The average there, and once again, it's an average for sanitary sewer payments. It's about $27.79. Wasn't for this, wasn't for this. Stormwater, moving one over, similarly, a flat rate of $3.50 and a variable rate of 1.67 comes out to $5.17. This is current, once again. Urban force fixed per month at $3. Water, I have in their variable because they have a much more complex structure. But on average, the average residential bill is about a little more than $24. And then there's water excise tax on top of that. So those two together combined to about $25.79. Get you to the monthly bill of $81.25 average bill per month. The bi-monthly cost is in there because we do bi-monthly billing for the most part. And then I also annualized the cost. And the reason I annualized it because I wanted to put property taxes in context as well. Property taxes, this is based on the 1429 rate, that increased rate of eight pennies plus. And this is based on the property, a property of 168,000. That would be $1,321 last year paid. And bring us to the grand total of 200, I think. I can't see that, my eyes aren't that good.
2296.
Thank you, 2296.
The new total would be 2411?
Correct. And then taking it down below, now that we've talked, went from the top to the bottom, it would propose solid waste being increasing by $1.25 a month. So that's a 7% increase. Sanitary sewer replacement halfway during the year, it would be a $1 increase. So it would be a 50% increase for the entire year, really a 25% increase for the first year, because it's only applied half of the year. Sanitary sewer, this is the proposed rate increase just on the variable rate of 7%. So that would increase that by a buck 95 per month. Stormwater would be flat, urban force would be flat. Water, as Todd presented on previously, is modeling at 8%. But if it does better than that, it may be lower, but that's currently at their 8% increase on the average bill. Excise tax applied as well. We get into a monthly bill, which is a differential of $6.26 each month. And then going to the, on a bi-monthly rate, that's an increase of $12.52, annualized $75.10 a month, just utilities, not topping property taxes. If we overlay property tax increase on top of that, it's estimated at $40 a year increase. So a total increase across the board of $115 a year, which is a 5% increase in this example. So one of the other pieces, just to also talk about, we want to make sure to talk about rates in a comprehensive way, because the rate structure is important to talk about. It's the most visible way for the public to understand what we're charging for services and also internally for us to understand what are the costs to provide the services and what is the appropriate amount that we should be costing out. So in this proposal, once again, it would be a 5% increase, including water in there as well.
And the one thing I would call out that I don't know that we've talked about a ton is that if it wasn't for Dratcho, we would have brought, been able to bring you back a flat budget that advanced the strategic plan initiatives with a property tax rate either equivalent or lower. When you put that 200,000 in there that we're putting against the debt service levy, that's more than the 150,000 that's showing against the emergency levy right now. So if it had not been for that, the budget that you were being presented on the property tax side would have been flat across the board.
Well, I like that presentation. That's where we end up. I think we all need to have a copy of that, because it kind of sums up a lot of what we talked about and what the impact is, so.
And this slide actually breaks out the fee increases. We've got these broken out really kind of slide by slide, so that you can see them in a little bit more context. The sanitary sewer one, as I said before, this is the one that could be most impacted by our continued discussions with Cedar Rapids. And, you know, my push with them would be to have that decision made before we have to certify our budget, so we know what that rate increase would actually be. But it could be significantly impacted, because that's about $89,000 a month that that capacity charge for going from 45 to 48,000 amounts to. Sanitary sewer replacement, I know council had some questions about this. I do want to take a chance to do a little bit more looking and see if I can dig up from one of the past printed budgets, when the last time that this one was actually adjusted would be. Solid waste, you've received the recommendation from the Public Services Commission on where they're recommending that we head with that. And here's what the timeline looks like for having to get to the point where we make our final decisions. So we have the budget work sessions scheduled. February 16th would be when we'd want to make the presentation to the council on what the shape of the final budget looks like, so that we could hold the hearing on, we'd hold the hearing on the maximum property taxes on February 18th, followed up by the final budget presentation to city council on March 16th and the hearing on the 18th. When they changed the law, they did give us two extra weeks. So we've got until March 31st to have the budgets certified and submitted to the state. But the driving thing that, as always, is the publication deadlines for those hearing notices. And that's it for the slideshow. So this was when we anticipated heading over into discussion, questions, what you'd like, what you like, what you don't like, what you want to see in a second draft. To Renee's point, what information you'd like to see? And maybe if you've got specific formats you want to see it in to help, help you make the decisions more easily.
Okay, go ahead, Colette.
Yeah, first, I mean, I know many of us have said this, but really appreciate, this is a lot of work to put this information together, a lot of work. It was really helpful to have it, you know, earlier this week and then be able to walk through it today. So really, thank you. You know, I'm hopeful that we'll have this discussion amongst us, whether it's tomorrow or in the next couple of weeks. But as Steve had said about the increase of, you know, the eight, I think it's eight cents. Overall, I think, would we say $115 a year? So what is that, $10 a month on average for the average citizen or average household? And I, I'm struggling, right? And I just feel it's important to sort of share that. We just received an email today from a resident reminding us, right? That people don't have jobs right now, they're concerned about how they're going to pay their bills. At Kirkwood, we have serving lots of people through a food bank that we have never done before. Yet at the same time, we, you know, are in a pandemic and we just had the largest natural disaster, I think, that we've ever experienced. So we, too, need to be able to keep things going and do the good work that we're doing in the city. So I just, you know, I'm not sure where I am, but those are the things I'm thinking about is, you know, asking our residents for more when many of them are struggling to, to manage with what they've got now. But at the same time, trying to recoup some of our expenses in order to continue to move the city forward. So a good night's rest, I think, will maybe help as I start to think about that more.
Anyone else?
Is it possible to get those lists that Renee is asking for by tomorrow, if we were to come in tomorrow? Or do we need to? I mean, is that too quick?
Yeah, and it probably, I mean, it's 4:30, but you know, I was looking at the dates and you have February 16th, which is the second work session. If we don't meet tomorrow and maybe, you know, I like what Colette said about it being fresh in our mind. I too also have it on my calendar, it's allocated, this is important. But I do want to see data in, and, you know, I echo that, this was a ton of work. It gets better every year. This is meaningful data and we want to make decisions based on this. But maybe we could, if we don't meet tomorrow, compromise on the first set of meetings in February to give us more time if we can't have the discussions and our minds made up. Because I still haven't heard from half of the council up here how they're feeling about this. That if we're talking about it in the first work session in February as opposed to the second one, we don't feel so forced to make a decision. We get everything on a Tuesday and then Thursday we got to vote because of the certification and the state's deadline. So at a minimum, I would like to back up the second set of when this would come back to council to the first set of meetings in February to get us more time to have discussions. If we don't come to a consensus, if we don't meet tomorrow. And like I said, I don't know if that's realistic, given what we're asking for, that wasn't in a certain format. But like I said, I'm, I'm not in any one department, so I'm looking at this as an entire city and holistically. And so at least the way my brain works, it would just be helpful to, like I said, I jotted down eight or nine different systems. And I don't think that any one of them is bad, I'm not against it. It's just a matter of, to Colette's point, I mean, people are jobless. Some people are displaced because of the Dratcho. I feel like if, if ever there were a year where we were going to have to tighten the belt and freeze some things, this is probably that year. You know, I'm sure if all of us in this room can afford this, what seems like a nominal, you know, $10 a month on that median house. But I think nobody in this room probably lives in the average price of the median house, if you will. And we need to advocate on behalf of those people. Though, I definitely would like to have more conversations. So if, like I said, if we back up to the first set of February meetings, that might give us some more time, give you all some more time to get some information in a different format for discussion. I don't know if anyone else has any other requests, those are just personally mine. But I really don't want to wait until the second set of meetings in February, because then we're just, we're really forcing ourselves with not a lot of time to make some pretty weighty decisions.
I'd also like to see like a breakdown when it comes to employee and pay increase, too. That's a two and a half, what if it was two? I mean, what was that, what would that save the city? Or even flat? I mean, not saying that's what we're going to do, but from flat all the way up to the two and a half.
Well, I'll just comment. I appreciate what Nicole and Renee, or Nicole, gee, sorry, Colette and Renee. It's late in the afternoon, right, Friday? What, what Colette and Renee have relayed. And, you know, there, there, this was very instructive for me, since it's my first pass through on a budget review in this capacity. So I do want to say thank you to everybody who worked to pull this together. But with deference to kind of our societal condition post-storm, a lot of people are recovering from that on a personal level. We've got the pandemic that is wrecking havoc on people's employment and placing other financial demands on them that they may not have anticipated personally. I am sensitized by some of the things in the budget that I think are high priorities. Ryan articulated his needs relative to equipment replacement and critical decisions there. I'm real sensitive to, today was garbage pickup for our neighborhood and I am, I am amazed, I am concerned for those personnel that are running those routes. They're throwing a lot of garbage, tons of stuff into the trucks each day. And they're doing that in weather conditions that a lot of us don't have to endure, either very hot or very cold, adverse conditions. And so something like that, where can we give them better equipment sooner? Can we give them different operating modes sooner with mechanical assist and picking all of that up? That's just an example. I, I really think they're probably in this budget is a delineation between the must haves and the desired items. And if I would like to see if there can't be a sifting of the must haves and those that are the nice to haves, because that maybe gives us some relief on the bottom line to put forward a total budget that is more responsive to our constituency in this difficult time. Okay. Well, I guess, just to follow on, I think to push out to the very first set of February meetings that we can further discuss this, we'll give time for that analysis.
Anyone else?
Yeah, go ahead. I don't, I think maybe two people said it, but I'm okay with putting in the paper the higher rate, advertising higher rate. I don't know if anybody, I think maybe two people said that, so I guess I'll throw that down, too.
I'm okay with that, too.
Just since we're on that topic, if there's anyone who's not okay with it, that's, once again, it just requires a small minority to move that. So if there's anyone who's not okay with it, we should definitely talk about it if not, because that's one of the decision points that we would need to. That is more time specific. The other meetings, we could do it different times, but that kind of domino affects the rest of the, the hearing process, so.
Anyone have strong feelings against that?
Thank you.
So I guess the other question that I have is based on where the discussion's gone so far. Would you rather just wait till the first meeting in February to have continued discussions? Or did you want to meet tomorrow?
So I would like to see the, those breakdowns or.
The summaries?
Yeah, summaries. So if it can be tomorrow, then push it out till the first work session.
I think it'd be tough.
I have the majority of the numbers and I could cobble them together, but I think it, I could provide them for the area that I'd be touching. I think I could provide it in a much more comprehensive way. And I wrote down the three areas that I think you articulated really well, the studies, the staff personnel, the study staff personnel and also the initiatives. And I think Grant also. Study staff personnel and also the initiatives. And I think Grant also said it really well too. I was just thinking in my mind of how to matrix it out to, to. Kind of put, where does it sit on a continuum of if we have kind of the nice, nice to haves versus the recommendations. This is where we sit as a staff. And also putting those recommendations to say, if we don't do this. Then is that, what is city councils thought about? Which of these things could we potentially not do? Or push off to another time? So I could, once again, another, another week and a half would give a lot more time to have a more robust document for you to review before.
Yeah, and I would add to that. I realize that you guys did the work of kind of doing your nice to have because you showed us the list that we'll probably see, you know, the following year. So to y'all, you've had that discussion, but I think, you know, you're bringing it to us. And we're kind of pushing it back and saying, do that exercise again and give us some more options so that. We don't have to make those decisions because y'all live with this every day. We're part timers here. So obviously we rely on your expertise and we know how much. You all care about it and what really is, you know, to go back to what Ryan's needs are and the fact that he's been. You know, prognosticating this for ten years and sitting on it and it's kind of at the breaking point. I expect that's going to be high on the list. Versus, you know, something that would be great, but there's not such a huge output benefit to the community maybe, or it's something that could go in the following year because. It's been unprecedented. And I think what you're hearing from some of us at least articulate is. You know, we just want to be sensitive to the people in the community who. Any of this stuff might seem a little fluffy and I'm not saying that it is, but. You know, there, there are basic needs issues out there. And so I don't want to. Shoot too far just because we can and for us in this room, it might not seem like it's that big of a deal because there's quite a bit of. People out there who are still reeling and. To the point that we don't know when some of the stuff, the derecho hopefully is kind of behind us minus the cleanup, but the pandemic. Could continue to impact people's jobs and businesses and those kinds of things. So I, I don't want to overshoot. When we don't have a finite end to that or the solution is just slowly coming out.
I second that.
Go ahead. It kind of seems if we're gonna be, go down this route and do some extra homework, then you ought to also. We're gonna have to also to some extent evaluate the impact of some of those decisions. Because I'm not sure where I'm at in this camp. Again, some are saying, gee, ten dollars a month is too much. All right, fine. If that is. The position that some want to take, then what is acceptable? Five dollars a month, flat? So it, it's kind of seems that if we're gonna leave here today, we ought to at least have maybe. Some indication of what the goal is. Because if you're gonna talk about some of these options, you're gonna say, well, gee, if we take this out of here, that has an impact of. You know, a dollar a month. This has an impact of five dollars. So I mean, we can take some of these things out of there. Some of the things we have no option for on some of the utilities. Some of it, we may have a little bit of option. So, you know, I don't know how, what everybody here is feeling as to what they're comfortable with. If they want to go, if they don't like the ten dollars a month, then what do you like? Because that impacts. I think the way you ought to present it back to us as to not just pick these things apart, because then we don't know the impact of those decisions.
I don't know if there is an answer to that question though, Steve, because. That they can do that and shows, show us everything. We may say, okay, you're right. Never mind. We're not going to change it. Or it could be. We're gonna drop it a half percent.
Well, I'm hearing people saying they don't like, if you don't like the ten dollars a month. Well, what I'm. Too much and what, what are you happy with?
What I'm hearing, oh, I'm sorry.
I'm sorry, I just say, I mean, I don't know. I don't know. It. It may be that ten dollars a month is what we have to do. After reviewing it, so.
What I'm hearing is it may not be so much the number. It's, it's being able to say to the, to residents. Of all years, this is the year that, you know, we, we did, we did only what's needed, what's necessary. And, you know, we are. Understanding of the situation everybody's going through. And that, you know, we're only gonna do what's, what's necessary, what's absolutely needed. And beyond that, you know, we're, we're, it's just, it, you have to be able to explain it that way to people. So it's not so much the number. At least that's what I, what I feel, what I'm hearing.
Yeah, I mean, because we might get the list of, of studies and, and think, well, never mind. I guess we can't cut any of these. We need to do them all this year or. Three of them could go and that could save five dollars a month. I mean, it all depends on, on what, I think, after we see the list.
Well, one of the exercises that we do, I think when Amal was going through the CIP this morning, one of the rubric pieces is what are the implications of deferring? So if you look at things like road projects or something like that, not doing an overlay during the proper window means all of a sudden you lose eight, ten years worth of life on the cycle of that street. What I'm kind of gathering from this is that maybe the council would like to see what does it look like for the initiatives and things that we've proposed in here? What are the implications of deferring those? Because that's kind of that inner relationship that you're talking about. Like, if we don't do this here, what does that do to us in the downstream? And that would be something that we'll have to talk about that would take more than, we would not be able to have that ready for you overnight with the scope of what's in here.
Yeah, just to, on a little further on that. So like I said, I wrote down. Waste management study, agenda management, recreation software, rental housing software, online codification, public safety, comp study, records management, payroll. All of these sound great and there's an argument for all of them. But maybe the online codification, we're not gonna like suffer if we kick that down the road a year as opposed to the public safety. Where aggregating that data is something that is a higher priority. That's, that's what I want to look at is the dashboard of all of that. And to Lon's point, what could we push off for the next year possibly without? Doubling the cost at that point or something. And that's one of the three areas I wanted to look at. The other was the. Studies, same thing. And then the other one was the staff, because I think we have. The medical insurance, the staff development and the salary. And we talk about the staff being what seventy five percent of the budget almost. I think we, you know, spent five minutes on that or ten minutes on that. And maybe that needs to be dove into as well. And I didn't hear from Randy and I heard a little from the mayor, but Steve, I think you are maybe in the minority in terms of the. I feel like you would vote yes on what was presented today and that's totally your prerogative, but. I feel like we're all having some more questions and wanting some more discussion and there shouldn't. Be anything wrong with that.
Well, and Will, you were asking specifically, I think what we'll do is on the. Issue of like flat to, to two point five percent, we'll just break it down and say, here's what five point five percent costs. Because if you know what a half a percent costs, well, you just double it to get one point five and so on. That, that way you can really. It would be easy to scale it in just half point increments.
Could we, I'd like to throw one extra one in there. Not to make it more complicated, but I like to work with the cost of living adjustment and that's one point three for last year. So. If we could see a line item for that, I. I feel and I totally am on board there with what Renee's saying, you know, we gotta be sensitive to about some of these things, you know, Cedar, or Lynn County just announced, you know, their. Their wage increases for some of their staff and. And I as well, I think a lot of people look at a lot of bullet points. I took a lot of phone calls from people when we initiated the urban forest. Line item on the water bill. There's gonna be people that are gonna talk about the water bill. There's gonna be people that are gonna talk about whatever they're sensitive to. Once we make these announcements, those will be some of those things, but. You know, and given the, the economics that we're in and so forth, but I, I would like to see at one point three on the, on the cost of living adjustment because that is a national trend that we follow. Though we have to be sympathetic for those that are unemployed or have had had a reduction, we need to at least continue to keep. Our vision on what the cost of living adjustment. A numbers are out there and I would like to see that pulled out as a specific column. And then we can, I'd like to be able to see what, you know, being above it looks like and then what below it looks like. And I think you're gonna do that, but if we could pull out that one point three, that at least gives us, tells us what. The national trend based on economics looks like. That's just the way I kind of like to work as well too. And I think that would get us to, I think we'd all see that same. Margin of numbers that we're looking for, but I share a lot of the same things here. I. I just think, yeah, ten dollars is ten dollars, but there's just gonna be people that pull whatever's passionate to them and what they're. Used to getting their minds wrapped around and that's. You know, that's what the public do, you know? I mean, we've all taken those phone calls and it could be college, you know, Kirkwood College, whatever their expenses are or public safety or fire department or. You know, whatever it is, they, they seem to gravitate towards those, but I think that's kind of also too where we need to keep the eye on the ball, but and by the same token too. I don't think there's gonna be anybody complaining about the urban forestry now after we've seen what we've just done with half of our urban forestry. So. Those things that we talked about in the past may take care of themselves in the future, but. And I think maybe the mayor might have made a comment or somebody did the other day and that is, is. People have been very impressed with where we have come from over the last several months and. I, I think there will be a little bit more understanding as to what we're trying to do to try to keep these expenses down, but yet. Very, they're very gratified as to what we have actually done and accomplished. We have all been super blessed with. Our city getting cleaned up is super quick and a lot of us are back to normal besides the pandemic. So. There are still a lot of people that have property damage out there, but. Nobody's, everybody's getting down their street. Everybody's garbage getting picked up. Everybody's tap water turns on and everybody's toilet flushes. So. It's still a good day. So, but I, I do share a lot of those same, what everybody's saying, I share with seeing some, a little bit more of those details.
Yeah, what you say is, is absolutely correct, you know? I think the mood that everyone's in, you know, if, if every, if the economy were just booming and everybody's working and all that, I, I think people, you know. It just depends on how they're feeling and if they're not working and their neighbor's not working and their. You know, kids are out of a job. I mean, you know, they, it, any, any change like that is gonna be amplified for them. And to, you know, not that they don't, you know, they, people appreciate all the services and everything and they do and we hear it every day. And they're so glad they live in Marion and they live in a city that provides excellent service and is very responsive to their needs. But it also goes a long ways to be able to, to show people that we are sympathetic to their plight and this is, this is just an unusual year. It's an unusual year. And to the extent we can say, we, we, we get that, we get that, we're not gonna just continue. Blindly, you know, I'm not saying we are, but I, you know, I don't want to imply that, but just continue just. Moving forward like nothing's going on. I think that that. Resonates negatively in the community and, you know, it probably justified. I mean, I think, you know, we need to show that there is an increase. This, this is what's necessary. This is, this is why we had to do this. And it just shows responsible leadership. And responsible stewardship. So I, I think we're all saying a lot of the same thing, you know, we, we want to be, be mindful. We want to be responsible. We understand that there are needs and things that we, that the city departments. Need to do their job, but you know, if there are things that can be prioritized over others. You know, maybe that's the discussion we should be having.
I think from my perspective, the most challenging part of it was just that we had the twin towers of two things happening in the same year. If it had just been COVID and we weren't looking at that three million dollars. That we're having to apply towards FEMA match, the budget would have looked very different coming to the city council this time around. Just trying to cope with that on top of pandemic. Yeah, makes for a tough year.
What I'm hearing then is the, is reconvening, would that be at the Tuesday work session? Would that? Be when everyone's thinking about the, the best time to give ample time. And I was just looking at the calendar. It's. It's gonna be here before we know it because in order to get out of documents that you have time to review it, that's. Mid next week to make sure that.
It's better than tomorrow, but is it doable for you guys? Because I mean, this is for y'all to have to put this together.
For me, for me it is. And I appreciate you guys being mindful of that. And, and I think also you've been very thoughtful about the decision. So I want to also make sure to. Provide all those layers because I think once you see the other layers too, I think that's, it, it provides a richer budget process as well. So, so thanks for the feedback.
Okay, so there's, there isn't anything productive we could do tomorrow?
I'm gathering that the mood in the room is to wait and get some additional information from us and frame differently and there's nothing else we have to present. So no.
Okay, that, that was what I was trying to get at is, I, I understand what we need to do in the next work session, but is there anything tomorrow that we could do productive? There's, we've done what we need, what, what we can at this point.
Yeah, the big decision point for today was the, the feedback we got from you on the maximum property tax hearing because we have to get that ready and get it published.
And then maybe Roy will, maybe Roy will have that answer to you before we meet again too, because that could impact some things because your projections were. An assumption, you know?
I'm really hoping so. That's what I said. I'm gonna ping him next week if I haven't heard anything. All right. I did not have anything else.
Anything else? Zach, anything else from council? We really appreciate all the hard work. I mean, I don't want that to go unsaid and I think several people have said it, but. I, I feel like every year we get better and better at this. We. Are more thoughtful, more detailed and this is, it just makes for better decision making, more sound decision making. And I, I just. Want to just make sure that all the staff and especially the people who are directly involved with this process. Understand that we really appreciate all the hard work and we've noticed improvements year after year and how this is done. So, thank you. It's making us all do a better job, so. Okay, thank you. Have a great weekend, everyone. Meeting is adjourned and we'll. See you all next time.
Thank you all.